We'd like to start our study session at 4:33.
Madam President, we're waiting for, if we could, for a couple of minutes. We're waiting for the laptop. I think we're having some technical difficulties.
Oh, okay.
So I'm going to go and walk out and just see where we're at.
Monica, she's coming now.
Madam President, Board members, Mr. Superintendent, I'll just start the introduction and introduce our guest for your first...
Did you call to order her in?
Yes.
For your first study session. So Team Tipton, as you know, was hired by the school board to conduct an assessment of the district stakeholders and to also design a process to conduct a visioning process with the entire community. Today, you and the public will hear Team Tipton's observations from that assessment and also present to you a roadmap should you choose to create a vision with your community. I know that you have had the opportunity to engage with the whole Team Tipton. You yourselves were part of the assessment itself, and you have seen some of the earlier preliminary observations. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to the CEO of Team Tipton, Mr. Bob Tipton.
Thank you, Alex. Good afternoon. We've been looking forward to the opportunity to present to you. I have a number of members of Team Tipton here with me, those that have been part of the process. You've met Audrey Cruz, Jane Shirley, and Christina Boatsom. We also have Nick Bonenkamp and the long-term member of Team Tipton, my wife Debbie Tipton, she's here as well. So we are pleased to be here with you. You have a copy of this in front of you, although I'll only be going through the English slides. The Spanish slides are available as well for your purposes, as well as for anyone from the audience that would like to follow along in Spanish. We have copies at the edge of the dais here to my left, to your right. So the first page is in Spanish. You'll see him go from Spanish to English, Spanish to English, and like I said, I will just advance through the English slides. So this is a chance for us to present the results of the assessment that you asked us to perform. You were all part of that in a number of ways. We interviewed you one-on-one, and we also had an opportunity to work with most of you very deeply through a workshop process. So the first slide that I'd like to address is the three curve slides that we talked about at our retreat, and this is sort of the purpose behind the visioning session and the assessments you asked us to conduct. There's a teal box up here in the upper-left side that says "Getting Ahead," and that's where we hope the district gets to. The box in the middle is where the needs are emerging for the community, for the students, for the district itself, and what we've observed is there's a number of historic approaches that are keeping the line bent down, which means that the delivery gap between where the world is going and what Adams 14 is able to do is widening. So a number of our observations have to do with the historic approach line, at least up to the emerging needs level, and then ultimately getting to the "getting ahead." So everything that we have to present to you is kind of contextually aligned to this slide, and if you would like to refer back to it, that's why we're talking about what we're talking about. So moving forward to the next slide, this has to do with the statistics of those of whom we interviewed and we had participate in the focus group. The organizations represented, there were 56 unique interviews and two focus groups that were conducted as focus groups. Some of our interviews had more than one individual in them, so when you see the math on the next page, they may not add up to be 100%. There were actually more than one individual in some interviews. About 81 stakeholders were represented. You'll see roughly a third were employees of Adams 14. Another third roughly were members of the community. Elected officials, students, parents, as well as community and parent organizers that weren't otherwise represented in any particular community organization. We also observed four different district meetings and facilitated two sessions, one of which was a three-evening workshop retreat with the Board of Education as well as the senior administration, and then we also facilitated a district leadership meeting that was held on September 20th in this room. So you can see the long list of the variety of organizations that were included in our assessment. Many of them came to us as a result of recommendations from the district, however, not all. We followed the string as it was presented to us. We were opportunistic when someone said we should talk to someone else, so we included others that we discovered as part of the interview process that we conducted. So everything from members of the city council, including the mayor of Commerce City, to members of Transform Education Now, Inspire, Cultivoando, CUPS, a real variety of organizations. If we flip to the next, you'll see the actual numbers done by different groups. So community groups, we conducted a couple of interviews. We asked for 18. That means we hit two-thirds. Not everyone responded to our request for an interview. Community, you can see that we asked for 25, and we were able to conduct 20. Senior leaders, we asked for 20, and we got all 20. And then school leaders, we asked for three, and we have them as well. A breakdown within interviews, 50/50 between men and women. And if we move down to the focus groups, you can see that we had a focus group with, it turned out to be the Student Council at Adams City High School. Represented there, there were six women and five men. And then CUPS, we had five members attend, all of them women. So you can see the different groups that we talked with. Then you can see the meetings that we observed, an ELD committee meeting, the first one, CDE Diagnostic Review Meeting on the 11th of June, community meetings on the 18th of September. That had to do with the KIP application that the board will be hearing about tonight. And then District Accountability Advisory Committee, we attended their meeting as well. And then the two other meetings that I talked about that we facilitated are shown below. So before I move on, any questions or perspectives about the data and where it came from?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Tipton, this breakdown is really helpful. The other, I think, really important dynamic in our community is the ethnic breakdown of the interviews that were conducted. Do you have that information?
Don't have that tonight.
Okay.
We can get that for you.
If in addition to that, if you could provide whether the interview was conducted in Spanish or English, that would also be really helpful.
Only one interview was conducted in Spanish only. Some of them were in both languages. So Christina Boatsom of our team is fluent in Spanish, and I don't remember the pastor, the minister that you talked to at the church, but that interview was conducted in Spanish. I would say just from a dead reckoning perspective, the percentages based on ethnicity were representative of the community of Commerce City.
Great. Thank you.
Certainly.
Go ahead.
Okay, great. All right, so the next slide, this is what we expect to see in an organization that would be in the category of typical or ordinary. Bimodal spread of different attitudes and perspectives when it comes to a variety of viewpoints. The point of this slide is to show that every organization has some level of negativity and it has some level of positivity. The fat part of the curve is where most people's attitudes exist, and this is what we see in the work that we do over the last several decades. The comparison is to what we have seen, our perspectives, our interpretation of what we saw as we were talking with the members of the Adams 14 community. The attitudes are far more negative than you would find in a typical organization. Some believe that everything is completely wrong and it needs to be blown up now. All of you should be replaced. Everyone on the dais should be replaced. We heard that perspective from a few. Others believe everything is pretty good as it is and we should just leave it alone, but the majority of those that we talked to, we would put their responses into negative. Some were neutral. A few were positive. Most were in the category of negative or extremely negative when it comes to their perspectives. Breaking this data down a little bit more further, you can see the scatter diagram where the x-axis at the bottom represents the confidence in the current Adams 14 leadership, that is you at the dais, and your ability to deliver a healthy future for Adams 14. The x-axis represents the optimism related to a healthy Adams 14, and what this chart will show, after you spend some time looking at it, I hope, is that the vast majority of those that we talked to believe that a healthy Adams 14 is a desirable outcome. However, there are few that believe that the current leadership inside of Adams 14 is capable of delivering such a healthy future for the district. So each interview, each focus group is represented by a dot here on this scatter diagram. Another way of presenting the information to you is based upon the top 20 perspectives that we heard from the various interviews, focus groups that we conducted. This diagram depicts by size the frequency of response. So the larger the circle, the more frequently we heard this from those that we were speaking with. And the shading of the circle, the darkness of the circle, the gradation indicates the intensity. Now, the intensity is subjective analysis. That has to do with the number of times we heard the comment from a single interview, the power behind it, the veracity of the comment, the volume of the voice, the adjectives they used. It was pretty obvious to us to be able to determine which items had the most energy behind them. So you'll see the one, number one and number two, they're large circles. They represent about a medium level of intensity. Some of the smaller circles that you'll see, maybe they weren't reported quite so frequently. So like number 11, didn't hear that directly from so many people, but those that did talk about it had a significant amount of energy behind it. And that has to do with one of the observations that we were able to pull out. It's a very much "leave us alone here at the district. We know what we're doing. In fact, we don't want to invite your perspectives, and if you share alternative perspectives, we may actually escort you from the room." This number 11 had a significant amount of energy behind it, although it wasn't talked about as frequently as others. The one that was probably the most frequently reported with the highest level of intensity was number three, and that had to do with the constant change. Four different superintendents in the last eight years, eight different principals in the last nine or 10 years, the number of people that have turned over in the individual schools, the instability in roles means that people don't know who to talk to, who to get information from, and who is able to make decisions. So these are subjective. These are Team Tipton's perspectives, but this is the simplest way that we can find to take a significant amount of information and report it back to you on one page. So let me stop on those three slides and see if you have any thoughts, questions, or perspectives that you'd like me to talk about.
Any questions or anything? Dr. Hyde?
I just, can you just, is it, did I hear you correctly, that the darkness of the circle represents intensity of the comment?
That's correct. Yeah, so the darker means there was more power and more energy behind that. Okay, moving on then. The next slide that we have for you is a high-level timeline going back about 10 years in the history of Adams 14. This certainly does not represent everything that's occurred. This primarily represents the number of significant changes at the district level. So you can see back in 2008, there was a decision to bring in a new superintendent. In 2010, that OCR findings, I'm sorry, the complaints were filed with the OCR alleging district discrimination. You can see a new superintendent was brought in in 2012. The discrimination findings were issued in 2014. 2015 started the biliteracy process with CU Bueno Center. We move into 2016. Dr. Abrego joined the organization, 2016, and 2018 represent resignations from the Board of Education, and you can see in 2017 that the contract with CU Bueno Center was not renewed. These are some of the most disruptive actions or events that have occurred within Adams 14 over the last 10 years. There certainly are many, many more, but these are the 10 that people talked about most frequently. So what that led up to is the next slide, and this has to do with the top 10 insights that we are presenting to you tonight. The first one I've mentioned already is that there's a shared desire, not quite unanimous, not quite universal. There are some people that are hoping that the school district fails. They're in the minority. There's a very small number of them. The vast majority are looking for a healthy Adams 14 school district. The optimism around that is nearly universal. However, the definition of healthy, which we'll talk about in a second, is not universal. What does that look like? And there's also a significant lack of confidence in the current leadership's ability to deliver that. Another thing that we discovered in our interviews and focus groups, those that we're talking about, is that reactive, short-term behaviors dominate because there's not a shared vision and strategy for the organization. It's almost as if there aren't, there's not a lack of vision here. There are too many of them, and the lack of alignment around them, combined with the amount of turnover and churn that's occurred in the senior leadership levels, means it's very difficult for people to know what to do and have confidence that what they're doing now will actually be sustainable. Communication, decision-making, and outreach have been highly ineffective, and that is at all levels and all areas. There's some level of improvement that's occurred since we began our study, but this still remains one of the biggest areas of complaint, especially from those that are represented in the community. They don't know how to connect with the school board and the administration in a meaningful way to talk about hard subjects. There's also a lack of stakeholder engagement. On some behalf, they've given up. They've decided that they don't have a platform, they can't come to talk, and they don't know who to talk to. So that's what that divisive, low engagement is a result of inconsistent district communications and leadership. Ongoing district leadership and school-based turnover has resulted in continuous significant disruption. Again, there's very little continuity in terms of what to do. We've also heard almost universally this next comment, this "us against them," whether it's the board against others, the others against the board, different groups against each other. It's almost as if Adams 14 is a circle. There are more interests and organizations trying to pull it apart than there are trying to put it back together again. This "us versus them" culture is pervasive, and it really limits the district's ability to talk about things in a meaningful way. There's almost no productive conflict that exists. Conflict is almost always negative. Something else that's happened, because trust is so low, in some places it's negative, it's not just absent, it's negative, is that people assume worst intent. That perspective is common. We heard that consistently, and again, that leads to the inability for hard conversation to lead to positive, productive outputs. We've seen some benefits that have come in terms of some organizational capability. We see some things that are happening in certain groups where you're able to get more clarity when it comes to roles and responsibilities. Some things are happening around communication, but there's almost a suffering in advance or who cares sort of a perspective. It won't last. It doesn't matter. There's not an ongoing commitment to it on behalf of the school board. So the capacity, capability, and stability necessary to sustain progress, people feel, is missing. And then a lack of data-driven decision-making, absence of clear systems and protocols and expectations. What this leads to is insufficient accountability. Plans are made, they're not followed up on. Promises are put forward, they're not delivered. And all of these insights lead to what are we going to do now? The moving forward position for next steps, when it comes to what Adams 14 can do, we have our roadmap that I'd like to talk about for a few minutes, but I will stop here and see if you have any questions or observations about the previous few slides that I've shared.
No one? No?
Okay. So let me move forward. It might be time to put on your reading glasses. I'm going to do that because the type gets very small at this point, because there's much that is packed onto this slide. One of the things that you asked for us to do was to present you with a roadmap to take you from the assessment that we have completed through events such as moving into the presentation to the CDE in the middle of next month, all the way through the process of implementing the desired actions that you have to build the type of community engagement and connection, the relationship, the trust, the feeling of community that we're in this together, all of those specific actions that need to be implemented. So starting at one, we began in July working on this. We are now in front of you at three. There's the public report out. You can see the various pieces of our assessment that are listed in number two. The next step will be to get the specifics associated with the public engagement process kicked off, beginning with the governance. In other words, how do we communicate and make decisions? We're in the process of building a communications plan with all the structure associated with that, so people know what to expect and when. There's also the community engagement sessions themselves, and you can see a list. This is not exhaustive. This is a list that we know of at this point, but community engagement needs to occur with these various groups. This all leads up to what we're proposing as being a community-wide Future Search Conference. Future Search is a technology that's been used for many, many years to bring large groups of people together in one place at one time to be able to discern what the path forward looks like best. This is something that's necessary, we believe, for Adams 14 to move forward, is to get the community together, do it in a structured and facilitated way that brings out the best possible outcomes for the next step for this process. We have something we call our Design the Future team, our Design the Future process, and that is a representative group coming from the entire community that then do the heavy lifting when it comes to the specifics. Having hundreds of people participate in the actual decision-making is unwieldy, so we're looking for some number, 50, 60, 70 people. We're not sure quite what the number is, but it's a selective representative group that does the heavy lifting. What they do in number five is they dig in and look at all the different dimensions associated with the school district, the things that will bring forward, the results that you're looking for, the outcomes, the processes, the approaches, the tools, the structures. They will bring forward the set of recommendations. In our Design the Future process, we ask for that group to create recommendations that are at about 80% complete. In other words, they're not done. They come forward to you, the senior staff within the district, for integration, for prioritization, for comment, for improvement. At that point, we get them moved to 95% complete. That's what happens at number six. We present the recommendations. We look at that as the end of Phase Two, by the way, in our work. Phase One is ending basically now. Phase Two would end basically at the end of June next year. Finalizing the recommendations would be the next step. And then finally, the doing of creating the one, three, and five-year action plans. These are very granular, they're very specific, and they're resourced actions. If the resource doesn't, I'm sorry, if an action doesn't have a resource attached to it, it is not considered an action. It's considered a hope. So this becomes very specific, very granular, very detailed, and embedded in the one, three, and five-year plans, which often doesn't happen in strategic plans, is the clear measures of success and the approach to mandate accountability. All of this is built by the community. It's not built by Team Tipton. We facilitate this process. It's a high participation, high expectation, and we have a strong track record delivering these types of engagements in the public sector where the results our clients are creating are remarkable, not just incremental improvements, significant improvement. So we look at implementation starting towards the end of next year. That said, when we find something that needs to be implemented now, all throughout this is woven in a concept of just do-its. If there's a recommendation that makes total sense, it needs to be implemented now and there's no more conversation that's necessary, we will recommend that that implementation happens now. So we're not waiting until the end of November of 2019 before we talk about implementing anything. That is the big, complicated, hairy kinds of things that need that kind of conversation. So that's a high-level view of our next steps, the roadmap that you asked us to create for you. Questions? Conversation?
I got a question. Thank you, Mr. Tipton and your team, for this presentation plus the retreat, the three days y'all gave us, and like I always start using now is the quote on your book, it's not what's right, not who's right, and I really truly thank you for what you're doing, and I like this concept, so thank you again. It looks good to me, so I really truly appreciate the work your team has put into this, and I'm looking forward to each phase y'all go through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Hyde, do you have anything?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Dr.? Mr.? Thank you.
Okay. We'll be here all night. If there are questions that come forward, obviously in an appropriate kind of way, be very much interested in any thoughts that you have, any perspective that you have. And the last thing I'd like to say is to thank you, to you, to inviting us in, to having the courage to allow us to go and ask, to bring the information forward, and then being open to receiving it in this format. Thank you very much. Team Tipton is honored to have the opportunity to be part of working with you in Adams 14 School District.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, school board members, Mr. Superintendent. This concludes the first study session with Team Tipton. We're going to move into your second study session. It's going to be A+ Colorado. As you may recall, during your retreat, besides hearing from Team Tipton and their observations, you also had an opportunity as a board and as a leadership team to look at data in a different way, perhaps in a different way of how it's been presented in the past. At my request, A+ Colorado, they are a Denver-based statewide education advocacy nonprofit. They partner with school districts and they partner with communities to analyze data, and they're here tonight to offer their analysis and their observations about the current and historical achievement data within Adams 14. I'd like to introduce Dr. Landon Muscarinias. He is here on behalf of A+ Colorado.
Good evening, Board. First, I just wanted to also echo the comments of Team Tipton for, you know, the courage to look in the mirror and have difficult conversations about performance and culture are really important aspects of leadership, and I think that's really a huge aspect to what we're about to talk about now, which is to look in the mirror and to examine the current status of school performance and district performance across the Adams 14 system. And so this presentation will be anchored on a similar presentation I gave to this board and to the superintendent just about a month ago, but at that time I had about two minutes to go through the entire thing, and I felt like it was an opportunity to now have more conversation and more consideration for these important data elements. And then on top of that, we've added new and additional data components that will allow us to go even deeper into a conversation around performance in the school system. So let's begin. Beginning with district-wide. So the first slide that we'd like to really take a look at, again, let's take a look at Adams 14 in the context of the larger Denver metro area. So in this slide right here, you can see all the major metro areas of Denver and of the broader kind of major urban core of Colorado. You can see Littleton at the top right here, and Adams 14 at the bottom, and the trend line over the last few years. This is the proficiency of meeting or exceeding expectations on English language arts. So the headline from this graph is that Adams 14 right here is the lowest of all the current school systems in the Denver metro area in terms of proficiency in English language arts compared to all its other peers across the entire metro area. And we think this is important to begin the conversation because while improvement can be seen at the school level, and we'll go to the school level here in a minute, we think it's really important to be anchored on kind of the connection across other schools and other school districts in the metro area overall. And again, of course, if there's any question or time, we can take a pause and jump in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Muscarinias, is this slide, is it across all student demographic groups?
This is across all student demographic groups. This is overall proficiency rates for English language arts in Adams 14 and the other school districts.
Thank you. And do you have any information, I guess, on, I'm interested in achievement gaps across all those different districts? Do you, does A+ track that information as well?
We do track that information, and we can provide that in a follow-up piece of information.
Great. Thank you.
But the data that we'll share later in the presentation, I think, will confirm that if we actually broke this out by subgroups, the bar would be significantly lower as well. well.
Thank you.
You got it. Okay, let's move on to the next slide. This is, we looked at the last slide about achievement, meeting or exceeding expectations on standard. This slide is really a conversation around growth, and we know growth is really important, and being able to analyze how students in Adams 14 are doing compared to their peers across the state. As you look across right here, the fiftieth, right here, is essentially the average across the state in terms of growth. As you can see right here, if you're above the line on state data right here, you're making more progress than your peers. If you're below the line in terms of growth, an important measure compared to, again, achievement, you're making less progress than the peers. So we can look at three through eight, English language arts, three through eight math, nine through eleven, PSAT and SAT math, and then PSAT and SAT also is here. You can see that, with the exception where still slightly below the mark here, students across Adams 14, both at the elementary and high school level, again, not making nearly enough growth to stay alongside their peers across the state. And what's really important to understand about the growth metric is that you're compared against like students from around the state. So to reinforce the point, Board Member, Board Director Moreno asked just recently, the growth metric does do comparison points and allows us to say, based on a variety of other characteristics, how are like students performing across the state? And again, compared to like student demographics, students Adams 14, in particular in these areas here, are significantly underperforming their peers across the state. Any questions on this slide?
None.
Okay. Let's move to the next one. We're going to zoom in a little bit closer onto Adams 14 and schools across the district. The reality is that there has been some good conversation and progress that should be noted, that has been made in schools in Adams 14 this past year, but what we want to do is spend some time really anchoring ourself in the underlying challenges that still exist within too many schools for too many kids and too many families in Adams 14. As you look across the bottom row here, you see the schools of Adams 14 ranked by their, with color-coded by their state ranking, so orange, red, or green, or yellow. And as you can see, you can take a look at and say, okay, Adams City Middle School is a yellow school on the state school performance framework. And then on the left, you can see they're ranked based on elementary, this is English language arts is blue, and the gray is mathematics. And this is met grade-level expectations. So this, again, we're looking now at proficiency, not at growth, but this is by school across the district. You can see the state overall, in terms of met, meeting expectations, is up here, about forty-five percent, about thirty-three percent at the state level. And again, to reinforce the point, every school Adams 14 is significantly below, again, with the exception of Alsup, which is coming a little bit closer, which will show up in additional data, is significantly below the state level of achievement in terms of standards and attainment. And in particular, one of the points we want to really reinforce in here is you can see that this is even true on some of the green schools on the state school performance ranking. And this is important because oftentimes we say, oh, we got green on the ranking, this happens in Denver, it happens on state rankings, but sometimes that green identification masks significant gaps and significant underperformance in the underlying data within the schools. So it's important to celebrate the progress, and because the state weighs growth so heavily in terms of how it calculates its school performance framework, you can see that in just in terms of raw achievement of schools at Kemp, Kearney, Monaco, significantly compared to the state average, significantly below.
May I ask a question?
Senator Moreno.
Oh. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Doctor.
My question is, you said this is a state average, we're saying that in Colorado, thirty-three percent, or thirty-three of a hundred students, every hundred students passed a state test?
Met, met expectations.
Met expectation, thirty-three percent, that's in the state.
Yep, that's exactly right.
Thank you.
Again, not nearly where we need to be at the state level, and I think it's an important conversation state policymakers have around accountability and performance, but it's, I think, really important to know that state averages are a comparison point that we should be holding ourselves up against. Great.
Senator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Mascariñas, what I found so interesting about this graph is that Monaco Elementary, for example, actually is rated at a higher level than some of the green schools, but I just want to make sure that's known, that that's because of the emphasis on growth.
That's right, that's right. The emphasis on growth in the state school performance framework masks a lot of these challenges around actual overall standards-based attainment.
And, if I may, I've also heard, because of this issue, because growth is weighed so heavily, that the state board may be looking at changes to that, can you speak to any of those potential changes?
Yeah, in fact, I know they're going to be having some conversations this week about this very issue, and it's been an ongoing conversation, both at the state level and in other metro areas, in particular Denver, is that the emphasis people want on growth because they want to be able to say, okay, our students are making growth compared to their like peers across the state. However, the emphasis on growth is so overdone in many cases, there's been coalitions of community groups that have called upon the state to look at this differently because of this fact. Because if a school like Kemp can become a green school, which is the top state ranking on this list, and only twelve percent of the students there are achieving in mathematics, how can we really tell parents and look them in the eye and say they're getting the top quality education?
Go ahead.
Okay. We're going to now deep dive, oh, sorry, I'm sorry, I thought I heard something right there, a little bit of an echo, sorry. We're now going to deep dive into Adams City High School, and again, going back to this question around how different groups of kids are performing in different schools, I think it's really important to have a conversation about Adams City High School, just given the critical importance of this high school has in a community like Commerce City, and then we should ask ourselves tough questions about how all different groups of kids are achieving in that school. So now we're going to pivot back to growth and look at the median growth percentile, again, at fifty, and say that's where it is to, again, to either be above, is to be doing better than your peers across the state, and to be below is to be, you know, achieving less growth, and in this case significantly less growth than your peers across the state. And in this case, we are looking at no CMAS data, this is not CMAS data, this is PSAT data and SAT data, again, a relevant and state-approved assessment that all kids in high school take to be able to make a conversation about college and career readiness possible. We take a look at that and we see that black students, Latinx students, white students, FRL students, emerging multilingual students, even non-English language learning students, although they're above the average here, are significantly below their peers across the state, which means that even in a state system, to the point made earlier, that prioritizes growth above all else, the growth being achieved in Adams City High School is significantly below the state average, which means that the opportunity for kids at this high school to keep up or to get on pace with their peers across the state is not possible with this low level of growth.
What is the state average for growth?
Fifty.
Fifty percent, right here?
So essentially, what the state does is it, it assembles a collection of like-minded students in schools, and then be able to say that at the fiftieth level, that would be the growth level that would be on pace to meet the state average, to stay on pace.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Mascariñas, this issue of comparing like students across districts, one of the challenges I think we have in Adams 14 is, our student demographic, our Latino students are the same as our free and reduced-price lunch students?
Sure.
Who are the same as the at-risk students? Can you speak to, I mean, does that have a compounding effect in judging the performance of Adams 14?
Yeah, it's, what you're speaking to, Board Director Moreno, is the conversation right now around intersectionality in some of these assessment results. So, you know, if you are a Latinx student who is learning English, who is in special education, your growth rate would be significantly less than even the subgroup that were pulled out here. And that probably qualifies a significant amount of students in both Adams 14 and in other districts around the state. So, and the reality is that none of our kids fit cleanly or into one group or not. And so if we think about this low level of growth across all these different indicators, to make your point, to push it even farther, that if a student in Adams 14 falls into many of these groups or multiple of these groups, the chances of them being able to keep up, to read on grade level, to do math on grade level, to graduate, to be able to go to college and not have to take remedial classes, is very, very, very low.
Thank you.
This next slide is going to require a little bit of explanation, but it's really important for us to understand and make, to have conversations about comparing schools across the state. So, on the left side of the graph right here, from zero to a hundred percent, we see meets or exceeds on CMAS around, this is math, meet or exceed CMAS on math from zero to a hundred, okay? So this is the, at the school, whether it's Dakota Ridge High School in Jefferson County, or it's Alsup Elementary School, on the left side is the amount of students at that school meet or exceeding their standards in mathematics. And then at the bottom axis right here, from zero to a hundred, is the percent of students in the school that qualify for free and reduced-priced lunch. So, you can see that unfortunately, across the state of Colorado, and again, across our nation, the correlation and connection between poverty and educational attainment is very high, which is represented by this line here. Now, the way that we look at this graph is to say that if you're above the line, that means that you are doing really well compared to other schools that serve that same demographic of free and reduced lunch-priced students, excuse me. So if you're above the line here, that means that you are beating the odds with students at that level. If you are below the line, that means that you're actually doing worse than the state, the worst than the state average, or worse than other schools across the state in terms of serving students in those schools. So as you can see on this graph, we have, you have one school in Adams 14, Alsup Elementary School, that is above the line fairly significantly, and you should be applauded for that, and the students and administrators at that school should be applauded for that. Although if we go back to the previous few charts, we saw the overall proficiency rate even for that school was still significantly low, which tells us about the overall achievement of students in poverty in the state of Colorado. But, the sad reality is that too many schools in Adams 14 are below the line, which means that students in those schools are not beating the odds, and in fact, they are actually doing worse compared to their peers in the state of similar demographic schools around the proxy for poverty, which is free and reduced-priced lunch.
Mr. Mascariñas, I've noticed on this scatterpoint graph that there are some people pretty significantly beating the odds.
Yes, right here, yeah.
What are those schools, and can we glean something from their success?
Board Director Moreno, the answer is that we know who these schools are, and we can provide a list to the board of these schools, and we absolutely must and can learn from the success of these schools. Just yesterday, I was presenting to the school board in Canyon City, Colorado, about two hours and twenty minutes south of here, spent the whole day there, learning from the school there. About six years ago, their district was on the accountability clock, had schools in turnaround, and now many of their schools are right here, they're above the line significantly. They've been doing significant investment work to create the enabling conditions at the school and district level, to let leaders do incredible things at the school level, to let educators make plans together, to create new school options for kids and families, and all that connected together allows that school district to be able to rise above the option that it previously was at. And it's so important that we spend time around the state, learning from schools, and learning and making those connections. And we can provide a list as a follow-up as well to the board.
Thank you.
Excuse me, what was that reference, to which school?
Canyon City.
Canyon City, great.
Yeah.
Are the other schools?
Which they just call Canyon, I learned yesterday, yeah.
We're doing bad, but there's still others.
This is a similar graph, but now looking at English language arts. You can see that the Alsup Elementary School is still above the line, but not nearly as far above the line as it was in math, and that the rest of the Adams 14 schools are, again, below the line. So, you look at places like Rose Hill, Hanson, some of these other schools, and you can see that they are significantly underperforming and serving the students in that particular And I guess I just would love to close this section of these two slides by just saying that we have to believe in our state and in our schools that we can break the cycle and the relationship that a zip code and poverty is the explanation factor for how you achieve in your school, and that it's really important that we look at data like this to say if we're actually serving kids in poverty in the way they deserve to be served.
Senator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Mascariñas, I was curious, do you have a similar graph? Seeing the data for this and how it specifically pertains to students who qualify for free and reduced-priced lunch is helpful. I think what's just as helpful is if you have a similar graph at all that's available for student demographics on English language learners.
Yes.
I think if I remember correctly, Adams 14 serves the highest percentage of English language learners of any district in the state, and I'm wondering, you know, how that pertains to students who meet or exceed English language arts requirements.
Yeah. Board Director Moreno, we can absolutely provide that information and come back to you all with that analysis.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So let's take a look at now, you know, we've looked at 2018 data, both at the district level, compared to other districts, now we've looked at schools, both in achievement and growth, again, compared to other schools across the state. Now let's take a moment to compare performance over time. And I'm like, I'm just doing it randomly. What this chart shows is Colorado school performance frameworks rankings from 2010 to present, showing from Adams City High School all the way to Kearney Middle School, the performance on the school performance rankings, excuse me, the indicator that the school received, whether it was green, yellow, orange, or red, in each school, in each year, over time. And we think this is a really important graph for you all to take a hold of as a board in particular, because it not only shows you the performance over time, which is really critical, because there are some times that schools will be red on a ranking for one year and then pop back up, or there are some times they'll be green, but then go right back down to another ranking, which you can see happened in Adams City Middle School right here. One year of green, but then the previous two years were orange, and then yellow and orange following up right there. So it's important to see the long-term trends that are occurring at many of these schools. But also important for you, and this is kind of, this graph is broken up from top to bottom in this way, for you to start thinking about interventions in schools at the top of this list that have been significantly red, significantly orange, and yellow for most of the last eight years of their time, beginning school performance rankings. You have another set of schools in the middle here, that while they have had troubling rankings for time, are coming into maybe potentially more of a yellow and green trend. And then you have a couple of schools at the bottom here, truthfully, that we've seen on a couple of the graphs, that are showing progress. But it cannot be forgotten that even in these schools, the orange rankings were not far behind, so it's very possible for them to slip back to an orange or a red ranking, or in particular, to go back to the graphs that I shared at the beginning of the presentation, which showed that even with these schools in the green ranking, it was masking significant performance deficits, and to the points we raised earlier, gaps between different students at those schools. Are there any questions on this graph?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Mascariñas, I'm curious if you've seen, growth is a really hard thing to maintain.
Yes.
Have you seen successful models in other schools, other districts, of how they've been able to keep a certain level of growth over a long period of time?
It's, Board Director Moreno, it's very true that I think there is a conversation in the state, which is going to be folded into the school performance framework conversation about the ability to sustain growth over time. Yet, there are schools, and then again, I'll just reference Canyon City yesterday, low-income community in Canyon City, a school has achieved significant amounts of growth over time every single year, even when it's put into new cohort- single year, even when it's put into new cohorts of kids based on performance. It becomes more challenging, but that becomes a different task for the educators in schools to be able to meet the needs of those kids, to achieve higher outcomes for them. So to answer your question even more directly, it is very possible, it is hard, but it is necessary for kids to achieve. The last slide we have here is tracking measures over time. So this is growth in Adams 14 schools over time on the subject of math. So again, we look at that 50 line here to look at kind of the means, the median growth percentile, and then you see that there are some schools, in particular Adams City High School, where the growth, and this is from 2010 to 2018, the growth has been very stagnant at that school. We have a school, DuPont Elementary, where growth has been declining considerably over the past eight years. Hanson Elementary, growth has been declining significantly over time. And then you have some schools with significantly uneven growth over the course of that time. Even with the spike, again, pushing them up a little bit on the SPF ranking, just two years ago, their growth was significantly lower than the state average. Again, an important graph for you all to consider, not just the one-year window of school performance framework results, but again, an overall arc of time, growth, and achievement of students in these schools.
Mr. Muscarinius, I'm curious, have you seen, in looking at data in this way, and this is really helpful, is it uncommon to just see an upward trajectory of growth, or is it more common, what you see right here, where it's a little erratic? I'm just curious, in other schools, other districts that you've looked at?
It's a really great question. Board Director Moreno, growth can vary significantly by year, which is why it's important to look at the overall trend. And sometimes, schools will have really high growth scores for a couple of years and low growth scores one year. Again, back to your earlier question about the challenges of now being placed in a different cohort of kids to be compared against, but the reality is, that's why the overall trend is important for that. Because again, with a school performance framework ranking that puts so much energy and attention into growth, it sometimes can confuse us in that one-year window.
Thank you.
I would love to close now. We know that it's an auspicious time for Adams 14, there are a lot of big decisions in front of you as a board and as a community, and we think it's important to not only have the conversation with you about the data, but we also wanted to share a letter that A+ submitted to the Colorado State Board of Education just last week. In this letter, we called for bold action at the state level to support students and families in Adams 14. We called upon the district to build a coherent and cohesive strategy to support learners of all types and backgrounds in the school system. And in echoing the earlier presentation, we recognize the district cannot do this alone, that it must bring community partners and families and all sorts of community members in, to be able to build the coalition for change, to be able to sustain a different type of educational outcome for kids in Adams 14. This has to happen at the school level, it has to happen at the district level, and it has to happen with the community as partners in all of it. Throughout the letter, that you can read at your leisure, you'll see a variety of recommendations we as A+ Colorado are making for you to take and for the state to take. We believe this has to be a strong partnership between you and the state, that kids and families and educators in Adams 14 are calling for something fundamentally different in terms of outcomes for kids and families here. We looked at all that data, there's a lot of, there's a lot of conversation, but the reality is, too many kids in Adams 14, for too many years and for too many generations, have not received the education that they deserve through our Colorado Constitution or as their human right and human dignity. So in this document, we talk about accountability, building that plan, building those strategies, you all appointing someone that you believe that can help manage the turnaround process, the state doing something along those lines, bringing in community partners and other types of support organizations, infrastructures, to support that work. And I just wanted to close with this in full transparency, that, you know, the reality is, I mentioned this when I came last time, as a teacher who taught in a turnaround school, I know this is hard work, it's very, very challenging work. And the work of the board is really to set the enabling conditions possible for this achievement. And one thing that we close this letter with is that it is possible. There are districts that have done it, there are districts that have shifted on culture, that have shifted in practice, that have built better options for kids and families, and that through collaboration and connection, we believe this is possible, and it starts with a mindset around partnership and orientation, to believe that all kids can achieve and all kids can learn.
Madam Chair, I have a question, please. You mentioned you worked at, you did work for Canyon, what other districts have you helped?
As an organization?
Yes, please.
For the last 12 years in Denver, in A+ Colorado's history, we were primarily focused on Denver Public Schools and Aurora Public Schools. And then this past year in particular, we've started to branch out to work with other schools around the state in particular. So our primary focus has been in Denver and Aurora for the past few years. But this year in particular, what we're spending time doing is going around to states to answer Board Director Moreno's question, who are beating the odds. Next, two weeks from now, I'll be in Lake County, I'll be in Eaton, a couple of weeks after that, we're going also to Valley. These are school districts rural, these are school districts in the urban area, in the outlying communities, large and small, that are actually beating the odds for kids across the state.
Lake County, that's up in Laddville, right?
That's right, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Besides this letter you just gave us, you just gave us, right? What? Speaking of Senator Moreno's questions, what specifically can A+ help Adams 14? What specifically do you think that your organization, A+, can help Adams 14 do?
Board Director Thomas, I appreciate the question. We come at it with a spirit of partnership. We have significant assets around data analysis, looking at trends in data, a national network around districts and schools that have beaten the odds, connecting you all to other districts who have done this, taking a look at the plan that you all put together to think through the next stage of the process, and giving you our honest and critical feedback around that plan. That's a part of the work we do with school districts around the state and sometimes around the country. That's a huge part of our value add in terms of this conversation, because we often play the role of the critical friend. We believe that kids and families deserve amazing education, and so we have an opportunity to use our assets and tools to be able to have frank and honest conversations like the one we're having today.
Let me rephrase my question. What have you and your organization, A+ Colorado, done for Canyon City? What did y'all specifically do to help Canyon City?
So if you're asking if we are a kind of turnaround support organization, we are not, we are not a turnaround support organization.
I understand that.
Yeah, so just to, and Board Director Thomas, just to answer your question specifically, there are other providers out there that are approved by the state that do that work very specifically. What we bring to the table is an ability to sit down and have conversations with leaders at the district level, at the board level, and interrogate or think through the plans that they're putting together. So for example, in Denver, we do this oftentimes, we sit down with departments and think through their authorization plans for charter schools, we look at their school performance framework rankings, we have conversations about the work they're doing to support English language learning students. Often, we play that kind of inside-outside role that allows us to do that, not as a support partner in a formal contracted way.
So, the data you provided us is great, I understand that, and I appreciate all the data you did. But I was trying to get to the point was, we know that Adams 14 students, and we know we have to get to, we have to help them in performance and growth, and we know we have a struggle, we understand this, and I respect all that you brought in front of me, but I was trying to figure out for myself
Yeah.
having an MBA in finance and accounting, and an undergrad in finance, I was trying to figure out, what else do y'all do?
Yeah.
What else do y'all help? What else do y'all, besides the data point, because you brought the data? And we understand that, we understand that we have to do some, our students and our staff, and we know we have to work.
Yeah.
But I'm trying to figure out, what else do A+ do besides come to us and give us the truth?
Yeah.
You gave us truth, and I'm not gonna deny that, but I was trying to understand, what else do A+ do besides sit down and say, hey, okay, A, B, and C, that's what I was trying to understand.
Board Director Thomas, thank you for clarifying the question. So, you know, we really believe that before any action can be taken moving forward, we have to start with the truth. And the reality is that in too many school districts around the state, and particularly in our experience, is they don't get to look at data like this very often. They don't actually have an internal research team that allows them to see the data over time like this, condensed like this, and so we always start with this as a part of the conversation. So we say, start with the facts. This is kind of the initial work that we have to do to be able to level set around what the path forward really looks like. And then, what we try to do is to build an advocacy agenda in partnership with community partners and the school district overall, and sometime, that's a little bit of a tension, you know, between what the district wants and what the community partners want, but we then try to articulate that, in particular, in the course of this letter, you can see that we're actually articulating specific recommendations that we believe that you should take and the state should take around this issue. And so I guess to push the point even further, is that, you know, we would really say, if you are preparing to take a course of action and you're thinking about what is next steps are possible, we would be willing to sit down and think through that, to leverage our research and understanding and network across the country, what we've already put on paper to say, we think, based on our experience and perspective around your district, how we think potentially this could get better.
Thank you.
And we'd be very willing to do that.
Thank you.
How did you come about to, to come to District 14 with the presentation?
How did that, how?
How did that happen?
Yeah, President Quintana, how did I show up right here today?
I know we're known out there, so, but...
It's a great question, I appreciate the point. You know, we work with school districts to give presentations like this around the state. Alex Sanchez, who I've had the chance to work with for the past few months here while he's in his rural state, previously asked for this presentation to say, hey, can we get a chance to go deeper into a data analysis? We also offered up and said, hey, if there's any opportunity to provide a deeper level of data for the board, we would jump at the opportunity to do it, and also, we offer that up to community groups as well.
So basically, you're a data company?
We're, so we're a nonprofit
Right.
that does independent research and then does independent advocacy. So I think, you know, insofar as you have in front of you kind of two things that we, that really represent the bulk of our work, the data analysis, and then the recommendations we think policymakers should take to move the system forward.
So you really don't deal with, like, say, curriculum or anything like that, that would help the teachers with the students?
President Quintana, absolutely.
Just data?
Yeah, we're, the data and advocacy come the side of this work. There are, also to Board Director Thomas's point, there are lots of other support organizations that are experts in curriculum, instruction, after-school support, all that sort of work. We are really in the business of, what are the policies that you are setting as a board that are gonna enable the conditions for your district to thrive and succeed?
And how many are on your team?
We have six people on our staff.
Six?
Yeah. Lean.
Anything else? No? Thank you.
And just one thing, thanks Alex for asking A+ to come in front of us, it was very informative, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Muscarinius. Madam President, this concludes your study session.
Thank you. We have about 20 minutes to go, so, did you have anything else, doctors?
No.
And then our board meeting will start at, I wonder, should we go in? I think right now, we're gonna go ahead and go in to exec with our attorney at this time, and then we'll come back out and start our board meeting at 6:30. Can I have a motion?
You gotta read it.
Oh, I gotta read this, yes. For CRS, parentheses, parentheses, tongue tied, 24-6-42, parentheses, for, parentheses, be legal advice, board to conference with an attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific matters. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to proceed into executive session pursuant to the statutory citation listed by the chair.
May I have a second?
A second.
Can I have a roll call?
Madam Chair, can we give any words as to the purpose of the special meeting?
Doctor, the attorney.
Some follow-up items that we
Yeah.
From yesterday's executive session?
Are there any general descriptors that we can offer, so the public knows why we're going into executive session?
Contractual issues?
Contractual.
May I have a roll call? Doctor Hyde?
Aye.
Mr. Moreno?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rolla?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.